Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukneak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Arden, would you start us out?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody, please take a look at the minutes of February 18th. And if there are no omissions, corrections, or questions, we'll entertain a motion. Kurkowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 18, 2019.
Dukneak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
We have a few recognitions. We are going to read the very first one for retiring fire inspector, Mike Rutz. So Catherine, when you're ready, would you read that into the record?
Certainly. Resolution 12039-030519, resolution of commendation to Michael J. Rutz. Whereas Michael J. Rutz was appointed a firefighter on February 25, 1991, and whereas Michael J. Rutz retired from his position as fire inspector, in fact, of March 1, 2019, after 28 years and one month of dedicated, full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, Michael has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Michael responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Michael has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and was a member of the city's first class of paramedics. He became a firefighter/paramedic on March 6, 2000, and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Michael worked in the inspection bureau as a fire inspector, serving a total of five years, where his dedicated work helped keep businesses, its occupants, and other contexts safe from fire. And whereas Michael conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas Michael served on several vehicle purchasing committees, having input and review of new purchases of engines and ambulances. And whereas Michael led the department's vehicle maintenance team and exercised great care and diligence in helping to maintain the department's vehicle fleet. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Michael J. Rutz and his family and in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Michael J. Rutz. Passed and adopted this 5th day of March, 2019.
Thank you Catherine. Chief, would you like to say anything on Mike's behalf?
Real brief, because Mike wasn't one that didn't want a lot of accolades. In his 28 years, he served the fire service and representative in all his entities that he did throughout. He could have been anywhere in the country and worked. He was that heart of a worker and that respected of a person. Also, the last five years as the fire inspector, not only does he represent the fire department in trying to be on a positive image there, but also for the city, because he's the eyes and ears in all of these buildings. And we stress the importance of how to put the city and not in the fire department in a good light. So I think he did that, and we always kid him a little bit because our fires were down because of him. So he was always giving 100, and the word 110% comes in occasionally, but Mike was the one of the hardest workers on our department.
Thank you Chief. Would anybody like to add anything? You know, I'm gonna just wish Mike on behalf of the city and the council, a long, happy retirement, well-earned. Again, career of 28 years, he's gonna be greatly missed. Again, his job was to kind of put our fire department out of business, and according to the chief, he did pretty well at that. You would regularly see Mike at a lot of events, National Night Out, things of that nature, doing the tours with the kids. So he's gonna be missed, but we do have some young candidates. We just wore three new ones in on Friday, so they have big shoes to fill. Again, to Mike and his family, we wish you a long and happy retirement. So if we could, motion on number four, please.
Gale, I'll move to approve resolution 12039-030519, a resolution of commendation to Michael J. Rutz, retiring fire inspector.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
The next five are actually award winners from the Chamber of Commerce Dinner that some of the people from the city staff attended on February 20, I believe it was. We will not read the proclamations in, they're rather lengthy, but we will offer congratulations, and we will do a motion separately on each. The first one is actually to Business of the Year winner, and that goes to our own Tri-City National Bank. So anybody has a word or two for Tri-City? If not, motion please.
Just obviously Tri-City provides good services for the city. We find them very useful, and I think Barb would testify to the fact that we get great service out of Tri-City, and it's great to have a local bank located here in Oak Creek. So with that said, I'll move to approve council proclamation 19-01, congratulations to the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2018 Business of the Year Award winner, Tri-City National Bank.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 6 is consideration of proclamation congratulating MATC Oak Creek South Campus for the 2018 Pride and Premise Finals. Anybody'd like to say a few words for MATC, or motion?
Well, we always appreciate Dr. Mark's contributions and his care of that facility. Obviously, is a great asset for Oak Creek. Do good work on behalf of a lot of folks around this area. So with that said, I'll move to approve council proclamation 1902, congratulations to the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2018 Pride and Premises finalist, MATC of Oak Creek.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 7 is consideration of proclamation for congratulations to Nucor Cold Finish of Wisconsin for the 2018 Environmental Sustainability Award Finals. Any words for them? This was a new category, and again, nice to see a company that manufactures things really thinking on the green side. If anybody has anything, if not, motion.
Jerry Ritchie and his crew do a great deal in this city, and we offer our congratulations. With that said, I'll move to approve council proclamation 1903, congratulations to the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2018 Environmental Sustainability Award finalist, Nucor Cold Finish, Wisconsin.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item made is consideration of proclamation to Savalia Financial Advisors for being a finalist of the 2018 Business of the Year.
Mayor Dan, I'll add a few things. Alderman Dukneak, 3rd district. I've had the honor to be a friend of Don's and actually be a client of his as well. Don's business is celebrating its 20th anniversary this year, and I know that he actually has quite a big bash that's planned using our new lakefront parkway. So in addition to all that, Don really does give back to the community. You may have read in the notes about his involvement with basketball programs in both the City of Franklin and the City of Oak Creek, but he was an incredible supporter, both financially and with his time of the Oak Creek Community Center and the many programs there as well. So truly, a great business in our community, and one that really holds true to giving back, he certainly does. So congratulations to Don and his 20 years of business, and hopefully 20 more.
Motion please.
So with that, Dukneak move to approve council proclamation number 19-04, congratulations to the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2018 Business of the Year Award finalist, Savalia Financial Advisors.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And our final one is consideration of proclamations for congratulations to MATC Oak Creek South Campus for the 2018 Environmental Sustainability Award finalist. Again, once again, it's a beautiful campus. If you've ever been there, very green. They actually, I think they have the only wind turbine in the city there, so they're doing some really neat and innovative things there at the ECON campus. So nothing else, motion please.
Thanks Mayor. Here, we'll move to approve council proclamation 1905, congratulations to the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2018 Environmental Sustainability Award finalist, MATC Oak Creek.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Once again, on behalf of the city, myself, and its residents, we'd like to congratulate all the winners and finalists, and just let you know that Oak Creek's very proud that we had five people in those categories that took home awards. So thank you very much for your efforts. Gets us to item number 10, which is supposed to be a public hearing which we will hold due to a clerical error. So that will be held, item 10 will be held. Oh, it's actually canceled and will be rescheduled, so. Which brings us to item 11, which would have been the resolution for that, which we obviously can't do. So we would look for a motion to file that to a later date.
Gale, move to file resolution number 12040-030519, as stated, until a future date.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Item 12 is informational, and that is our treasurer's report, and we have Barb with us tonight.
Good evening. So I'll just go through the balances for, and tax collection for January 2019. Our beginning balance for the month was $68,547,384.11. Ending balance, $60,916,124.16. Interest earned, $114,621.11, which is a decrease from beginning to end of $7,631,259.95. Basically, and due from our December tax collection settlement in January of about $27 million compared to the $20 million we collected in taxes in January. So for January tax collection, just under $20 million, about 25% of the levy. Our city share was about $6.8 million, including our specials.
Okay, questions for Barb? It got dry, a little bit of a decrease, but we do have the explanation for that. If nothing else, thank you Barb, appreciated, have a good night. Item 13 is presentation by Millman for the Oak Creek Actuary Valuation of Retiree Medical Benefits. So we have Bridget with us, and looks like Millman's coming up.
Yes, so we do have Steve and Tim from Milliman here, but first, I'll run through the council report a little bit, just for some historical perspective. So we are required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board to produce an actuarial valuation of our retiree medical benefits, at least every two years. So this report in front of you is dated January 1 of 2018. It is good for our 2018 and 2019 audit. This is our standard, normal timeline for how we produce these reports. Retiree medical benefits are what we also refer to as other post-employment benefits. So it's the health insurance and the medical benefits that the city would give our employees after they've retired from employment. So those of you that have been on the council know that we have done a lot of work over the last 10 years with our contracts in reducing this liability. So we, at this point in time, no new hires of any capacity in any department have the ability to earn post-employment benefits with the city. So as you can see in your council report, we have been reporting to you our unfunded actuarial accrued liability. So that's essentially the way that we quantify what that liability is of all of our employees that are currently employed with us and still would receive this benefit because they were a part of, you know, the earlier days when they, we were still giving the benefit out, what that dollar amount would be in today's dollars for our liability. And for 2018, that is roughly $36.5 million. That is down 59% from 2010. So that's just to give you, in 2010, we were at an $89 million liability. So that is a significant reduction based on the changes. And again, this is a liability, this is not the actual dollars out the door, if you actually turn the back page, or the back of the page, our service costs or the employer's normal costs. That's essentially what we are paying in our retiree health insurance benefits each year. So that also saw a 50% reduction from 2012, was the last time that we were recording that. So just some historical background. I think Tim and Steve may have just a few brief overview comments, and then if you have some questions, they are here and willing to help answer.
Steve Hanson. Just a couple of background items. The underlying expected medical costs are slightly favorable relative to the prior valuation. Went down just a little bit, which did contribute to the change. As Bridget noted, no new retirees. You've had that on the, no retirees since 2011 have been able to have 65-plus carry their coverage pass, 65-plus, so that group is just slowly going to decrease. Your actual retiree count was up slightly, but that is just the timing of it, is people retire that are eligible for the benefit. And it could increase still before it goes down again. I'll let Tim mention a few other things.
Tim Blake. So Steve is the health actuary. He puts together all the expected costs of the health benefits, and I'm a retirement actuary who takes his information and projects it out for all your people as assumptions as to how much they'll utilize the benefit, both the current retirees as well as any active employees who are eligible for that benefit in the future. And as Bridget had pointed out, your liability, which it's unfunded, there aren't any assets, you know, set aside for this, but your liability has been going down over time, and it did go down again. One thing that's driving, or one thing that's affecting the numbers this year is there's a new accounting standard that's effective this year. So the Government Accounting Standard Board did issue a new standard effective for fiscal years beginning after 6/30/17. So going into 18 and 19 here, you're reporting under a new standard. I'm not going to get into the details about that. It does have some implications on sort of how we allocate costs to employees over their career. But one thing that they did change is, instead of using a risk-free rate of return to discount liabilities, we do actually use a published 20-year municipal bond index. And so one thing that did help the numbers this year, we were using a risk-free rate assumption in 2016 and '14 of 3%. The municipal bond index, I think, was 3.44 for 2018, and then 4.1 for 2019. So a higher discount rate doesn't mean the liabilities are lower when you present, give a present value, so that is one reason that it's coming down. I just want to point that out, so that is, that does not affect your ultimate cost to the plan, it's just an accounting assumption that we use. It does mean that the future accounting obligations could be a little bit more volatile. Instead of just using a 3% every year, we'll be using a different rate to discount the liability. So this year was a favorable movement because we were able to use a higher discount rate, which generates a lower liability. But there really haven't been any other changes since 2016. You know, those provisions that you implemented were already there. The population is basically the same. It's shrinking because no new, you know, no new entrants are coming into the plan as you hire them. But, you know, we'll continue to see that. But other than that, you know, as Steve mentioned, we did see some favorable experience, especially on your post-65 benefits, just expected claims per person down a little bit versus expected. So that was the main driver, along with that higher interest rate that brought your cost down this year.
Questions, comments?
Alderman Kurkowski, 1st district. Do you guys ever look into comparing cities like Oak Creek, excuse me, to other, some other sized municipalities and say, hey, Oak Creek, you guys are doing really well because this is what your plans are? And you guys are like, say, out of 10 or 15 comparable cities, you know, this is how you guys... Are you ever, are we ever ranked like that for maybe GWAS information or anything like that?
We don't do any formal studies of that nature.
I'm just curious, because you know, people always talk about, you know, tax base and tax rate and, you know, Oak Creek or whatever city is, I get the, wherever they may fall into it. So it'd be, it'd be nice to know, because it is nice that we've done so well with this plan with the new hires and stuff like that. It seems to create a healthy environment here in the city, so, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Now...
Mayor Dan, could I respond?
Please.
Just for, so, I don't know if it was six months ago that we were, I will use the word "featured" loosely, in an article about the OPEB, about our post-employment liability. And that really looked at population size, but you have to remember, this liability is a direct effect of what each municipality negotiated into their contract. And so that's really difficult to try to figure out apples to apples in terms of why everybody ended where they did with the liability. So I think the point and the genesis behind the council report, which I just have been keeping up each, every other year, is to really show that we are showing to you, as well as to our citizens, we are making dramatic changes in how we have handled this liability to reduce it. And as Steve mentioned, you know, there's a higher number of retirees that are counted in this report. We're gonna continue to see, I mean, we're still riding the top of the bell curve, and we're gonna get to the top where then we'll start seeing it come down, because we aren't adding any additional bodies to that liability or that program.
Anyone else?
Mayor, you probably remember too, when, I don't, former Administrator Peterson had made this a priority for the city to attack the OPEB liability levels, and the council had directed that administration to go after that. So it's heartening to see some progress this way in the last eight years, according to this, so hopefully more to go.
Ken, you're right. I mean, it was back, it was 10 years, from the time I got on, it was always kind of hanging overhead, so it was kind of focused, six, eight years ago, and you don't really see where it's going now, so.
Good. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Gets us back to item 14, consideration of a resolution establishing a date and time for the 2019 border review.
This is just a routine consideration. The board of review is determined that they'll meet Monday, May 20, for the statutory meeting for the 2018 assessment role. At that time, it's anticipated that the assessment role will not yet be complete, so they will determine the board of review hearing dates at that meeting. It is anticipated that we will also hold board of review hearings in June of this year.
Thank you Catherine. Any questions, comments regarding the dates? None? Kurkowski make a motion, approve resolution number 12037030519, establishing a date and time for the 2019 border review.
Dukneak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 15 is consideration of a motion to approve an electronic message center at the PD. With us is Chief Anderson and Captain Stecker.
Good evening. This is a follow-up, this is something that we went through with the CIP and CEP process for the budget. Following the city's purchasing policy, this was approved in the budget, but because of the cost of the item, we still have to come in front of council to ask to have the funds released. Since we have had a little bit of time, you'll notice the report is written up, and I did supply, I believe, the original CEP, but we've gotten some better quotes since that original process. To those, I would let Captain Stecker speak. He did most of the research on this. So our original vendor that we wanted to go with, there's actually a better project. The technology has grown. Because of one of our other CEPs with a cost change, this is slightly more. The other one was significantly less, so we're, I spoke with the administrator, hoping to be able to use a little bit of that money to cover this, but this gives us a board that we're able to expand on in the future. They come in 12 by 12 blocks that you can build on this if the city ever has a need to build. For the technology questions, I will pass this, and what Captain Stecker did through the, all of the different options there. So I'll pass that off to him if there's questions about it.
Bring the new message board.
Alderman Dukneak, 3rd district. Gentlemen, is it the same size as the existing signboard?
It's gonna be virtually the same size, except we're gonna go edge to edge. So right now, we have that wide bezel because of the old technology. This one will actually be edge to edge, so we'll actually have more visual space than the previous one.
So Dave, what is the actual display space then?
It's about 3 feet by 10 feet.
The bricks are staying where they are. That whole inside part will be filled, and you also have the option, with any standard of computer, to decide if you have to upgrade for any reason on that.
Other questions on the message board?
Nothing, other than this is long overdue, and it's good to see it happening, so decided to see this go.
The old message board failing or just outdated?
It's very outdated. It's running on computer technology that has to be, it can't be updated. The old technology of the bulbs, which constantly go out, you basically have to replace almost all of them when it happens. This, this is just going to be more efficient. It's gonna give us much more capabilities to put all of messaging for the city out there with even short videos and different things. It'll have dimming for bad weather. You can set a lot of different things because of the traffic, so you don't, obviously, we have certain standards, we can't have it too bright. And a lot of that is set in there, snowstorms, there's even features for that to be able to adjust to. But all of the stuff that's going on in the city, at Drexel Town Square, the other departments, it's going to be a great place, and it's on a main thoroughfare of the city to try and put messages out.
I would agree with that. I mean, we do have some message centers that we try to utilize, whether it's a community center, Drexel Town Square stuff here, so, sounds great. Any other questions?
Another question. At $33,889, is that just the cost of the message board, or does that include all the electrical connections that need to be done, the software? I know you have to have a dedicated laptop or a computer station for programming, so is that the total price?
That's the total, that's all the connections, that's taking away the old one, that's the install labor on the new one, and any permit that may need to be pulled for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Motion please.
Dukneak move to approve the previously approved CIP/CEP for the LED electronic message center and the total cost of $33,889.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 16 is consideration of a motion to purchase four selected Marksman rifles for the PD that is authorized in 2019 budget. Chief Anderson.
This is another item. The rifles, as stated through the CIP/CEP process, we have five current rifles, all bolt-action, some of them, the age doesn't matter, the amount of rounds we're putting through do, some of them are 26 years old or older. This is going to put us on a much better platform. This is going to put us on a much better platform. We are making an adjustment, the little bit of cost increase on this one. I'm not asking for more money. We'll deal with that internally, because we're looking at, if there has to be a modification in the future, we're ordering these weapon systems with the capability to add, basically, I'm talking suppressors. If we ever have to shoot these rifles in a building or in close proximity, we want to have them equipped with the right barrel, things in that, for adding a suppressor in the future. To retrofit them would be very expensive. So I'm asking for the money that was approved in the budget process for these rifles. Again, individually, they fall under the threshold. We're getting all four at once, which was approved. But that puts us over, coming in front of the council, asking for the funds to be released.
Questions for Chief Anderson regarding anything?
We pressed him, kicked his brain pretty hard on the CIP meeting. It's thoroughly justified, given the age of the existing equipment and the current standards, safety standpoint. I think a very rational decision. Forward.
Steve, are you looking at?
I think with the barrel increases and that, it's about $3,000. Or with all four guns, and there's one other small part. Honestly, I plan on, I'll take that portion out of either my budget or ask for forfeiture to cover that. I'm not looking for any other funds to cover that for anything.
Secret fund.
Well, it's actually, it's part of our budget.
Just kidding. Just kidding.
Too shady.
Had to add a little humor in today. Yeah. If there's no other questions, comments, motion, please.
Yeah, we'll move to approve the purchase of four selected Marksman rifles previously authorized in the 2019 city budget in the amount of $20,679.96.
Guzikowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Hi.
Dukenyak?
Hi.
Toman?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Guzikowski?
Hi.
Thank you, guys. Gets us to item 17 in engineering, and that is consideration for approval of our safe routes to school plan. Mike, you got this one?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of graphics that I'll bring up on the screen here. One of which is the executive summary of the report, which I made hard copies of for the council's use. Couple of glitches on some of the graphics that they won't show on the screen at least, so hopefully that clears that up. So background, basically, back under resolution 11459, the city committed to accept a grant through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the development of the safe routes to school plan. The grant was a 20% grant, 80% grant, excuse me, 20% city. So out of the $60,000 that was spent on the report, cost the city just the $12,000 out of their own funds here. Goal of the Safe Route to School Plan, provide and promote for bicycle and pedestrian travel by elementary and middle school students and to and from school through the education of the benefits and safety issues involved. Engineering led the effort, working with their consultant, Community Design Group, along with select staff and citizen volunteers, PD, and also Little Creek Franklin School District. The work included review of existing facilities, both at school sites and surrounding neighborhoods for safe bicycle and pedestrian travel, i.e. traffic flow, signage, crosswalks, neighborhood connections, bike and pedestrian programs, development surveys regarding school student behaviors, and parental opinions and evaluations of the results. The resulting overall Safe Route to School Plan is comprised of nine action plans, the two middle schools, and the seven elementary schools. And from what I understand, the school district is already implementing some of the recommendations on their own properties. So basically, in the Safe Route to School Plan, the action, the executive summary, just like to point out some of the, basically, the basic points and tenets of the report. And that is, basically, that the number of students that bike and walk to school is greatly reduced, even from just one generation ago. Biking and walking to school are behaviors that contribute to physical and mental health, support social and academic success, and provide a foundation for lifelong helpful habits for the children. On the engineering side, Safe Route to School Plan provide ways to improve safety for bikers and walkers through infrastructure improvements, both on public and school properties. And on the school end, the Safe Route to School programs make walking and biking enjoyable for the students, all while increasing their growth socially. The plans, they always reference what is referred to as the six Es of Safe Routes to School, that is, education. So safe walking and biking practices, encouragement, that's the programs through the schools that inspire families to bike and to walk. Engineering, which is the sidewalk pathway, crosswalk improvements, projects. Enforcement, which is police enforcement of traffic safety laws, speed limits near schools, use of crosswalks. Evaluation, that's the measures before, during, and after these programs are enacted, so that you can evaluate, are these programs successful and having an effect? And equity, which is distribute the resources fairly throughout the community for equal access to programs and improvements for all. And with that, too, as these, as these action plans were implemented, there was, and this was one of the, you're not going to see it on the handout that I gave you, unfortunately, but it is the action plan vision, and that is, Oak Creek students and families can safely, comfortably, conveniently walk or bike to school in a safe and inviting environment. Parents, school staff, local officials, community volunteers, and local law enforcement work together to provide the infrastructure and programs necessary to keep kids safe and active, and to invite them and their families to choose to walk or bike to school more often. The other graphic then that I would like to show you is one of these nine action plans, and I just select the first one in the group, which is Carrollton Elementary School. So basically, these plans, they all have a kind of a basic, same basic elements, but they are all evaluated, of course, on their own existing conditions and merits. So basically, is, as we go through this, let me get you to the first page here. These are on the screen. Basically, it talks about, the explanation again of what Safe Route to School Plan is about, what the action plan hopes to achieve. The, again, references the six Es, and talks about the, what's the content in this action plan? And I'm going to go through these real briefly, but then we get into the existing conditions, the number of students, arrival time, some of the other, you know, elements of the school, and, of course, the location of the school. Next page, we get into enrollment density. So as you see on the graphic, there is, there's a half-mile radius of the school, and that is the target area on all the elementary school plans. What can be achieved within that half-mile radius for the students that might bike or walk to school? And so that's what you're seeing there. Of course, that shows the whole district or the sub-district that would attend Carrollton Next, we see the access and circulation, pretty simple plan, but still key, where they want to see where do the parents drive as they access the school grounds, as they are arriving to drop off and pick up their children. It's represented with the dark blue dashed directional E, and also, oh, they're both E. And then the light blue is where the school buses come. There's an evaluation of existing infrastructure. So what do they have by way of pedestrian, bike, and bikeways, and crosswalks, and safe signage in and around the school property? Existing programming, that would be, what is the, what is the percent of, if they're able to establish as they do surveys, what percent of the students are walking or biking to school? And in this survey, there was a finding that elementary school students walk, and approximately 1% of the students bike to school, 4% walk, 1% bike. So that's those small numbers that I referenced earlier. And then there's a evaluation of, you know, crash history. And this one had one incident of a motor vehicle and a bicycle between 2006, 2015. Then there was a walk audit, and that is, one of the people on the Safe Routes to School team, and this was our volunteer resident, Rudy Ums, who was really invaluable to the team. He's retired Federal Highway Administration employee, really a big asset to the team. So he was involved with these walking audits. And they just review, you know, what are the conditions? What do they observe as school is, students are arriving, as students are leaving? And they make note of that. And also within that, there's the, they will make some conclusions with the assets and challenges. Here they reference, okay, there's crossing guards. But in another, they say, okay, one of the challenges, we've got a sidewalk that ends and just, you know, goes nowhere. So, of course, that would be a target of a possible recommendation for improvements. Then the overall, the recommendations, there's an overview, and as you can see here, there's quite a listing of recommendations, and these are in tabular form. The next, the next page basically shows the areas that they're talking about. So you can kind of see the dark blue over on the left of the screen, extend these sidewalks further to get to that half-mile radius of the school. The yellows are, you can do better with your crosswalks and signage. And there's another blue here in the center of the screen where it's just an open field, and because it goes to a dead end of a cul-de-sac, yeah, this might be a location for putting a pathway in. So it's a more direct route to the school. And, you know, of course, that would encourage the pedestrian movement and bicycles as well for that matter. Then as we go further, there are thoughts to what are some of the programs that would potentially could be looked at by the school to enact? And then also some of the signage and crosswalk improvements that might apply to this area. And then lastly, it's the implementation and next steps. And these are kind of general. How would, you know, how would you go about getting some of these programs up and running? And some, what are some of your resources? And you can see there's some, there's some internet links to some sites that are helpful in that. So, but basically, that is one of the nine schools that, that there's an action plan that was established. So, I think I've talked long enough. Anybody have any questions?
Just a couple of quick things, if I may. Mayor, Mike, I'll scold you tomorrow, or kind of now, for not identifying this as a strategic plan initiative that your, the city staff is following through on. Under our Quality Infrastructure, Amenities and Services Critical Success Factor, one key initiative is develop strategies for future multimodal transportation enhancements. And one of those objectives within that is to finalize the Safe Routes to School Plan. So, Mike, there you have it.
Got it.
I also would like to note that, and I want to be really strategic about the messaging here on this, and refer you to a same-page report that I'll be putting out. The Safe Routes to School program isn't really designed to the high school, high schools. It really goes up through the middle school. It doesn't handle or critique or involve high schools and other, you know, higher education. The city and the school district are partnering on a solution for segments of road around the high school, and that partnership has resulted in, formally in an MOU that will be before the council at your next meeting on the 19th. And the school board is positioned to approve that relationship, that partnership for traffic calming and safety enhancements around the high school campus at their March 26th meeting. So just stay tuned on that. I don't, Mike, have you had any commentary? I don't know exactly the reasons why they kind of stop at the middle school level. They've just given up on the kids. Once they get to high school, you have it ingrained, and you have the ability to do that, or half the population's driving anyway, so.
And that's really what it is. It's, it's, the kids are starting to drive, and so the focus is elementary, and it ends at the middle schoolers.
So just stay tuned on that for your next council meeting.
Before I open it up to the council, Mr. Dagner, you asked to speak and have a comment on this subject?
Arden Dagner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Yay, it's only I can say. Every one of these schools, except Forest Ridge, requires sidewalks or plans, every one of them. Isn't that what I've been trying to convince people? And especially, you go, take a look at this Deerfield School. They specify sidewalks on Oakwood, on Elm, on two of the other roads. And as I recall, I was here in front of the council requesting that. Oh, no, no, no. We can't have, we can't have the abutting property owners giving property for sidewalks. We'll have to pay for them. That's what I was told at that time. Now, how will we implement this when we have that same mindset? How can we implement it when we have many property owners that don't want even sidewalks? And yet, we have an action plan, but is it really that? Just take a look at the other schools sat here. Is there any mention of the problem of Grace Lutheran School right across the street from my house? There's no way anyone can cross that. There's also the Badger State, which is adjacent to the West Middle School. Is that considered at all? As well as the Parkway Church on Nicholson Road, that school, where is that considered? Then we have St. Matthew's School on Chicago Road. Altogether, this is a funding mechanism for just a small portion of our city. And then there are problems with it, too. For instance, the curb out, bump outs. Oh, isn't that a wonderful thing that we could have at West, at Carrollton, at West Middle School? I'm sure the county will appreciate having this bump out to take, go into a complete lane, and therefore, the snowplows would just enjoy ruining their blades as well as the concrete every time the snow piles up, because the bump out is supposed to...
Arden?
Yes.
Do you have comments regarding the report? Or, you know, the commentary on the snow plowing and stuff? We get it, it's been... We, we get it, it's been a tough winter, but stick to the report, please.
Well, there's also the ADA requirement. I, I went over this, as you probably recognize. I went over this very carefully. And if I can't explain it, it takes money and not, it's incomplete.
It is a step in the right direction, I believe. Mike?
Yes. Part of, part of having this report and basically accepted by, by the council is that we hope and expect that this will help us land some grant money from the state as these, as these programs come around. Sometimes they come around yearly, sometimes they come around biennially. But it is our understanding that having an approved report, a prioritized report will increase your chances of, of getting, of gaining funds. So to Mr. Arden's point about the, the private schools, we concentrated on the, on the city, on the, on the public schools within the, the city school district.
Makes sense. Questions, comments from council? Chris?
Alderman Guzekowski, 6th District. So I might just quickly, the funding, so the grant, grant money, if that becomes available, then you target the highest priority for an area that we want to target for, you know, first and then prioritize are we going to get them done?
Yes. I mean, with the, all of these action plans, they've got not just list of improvements, but prioritized lists. And not quite sure exactly how we might identify one area over another. But that's certainly something that will come around during budget time. But yes, we'll have to, we'll have to decide. And, and I think a lot of it may come from what, what we hear from, from you folks. If, if, if you go through the report and you say, here's one that I'm familiar with or I've heard about, I want you to take a close look at it, or let's get together and talk about it. And I think that that's kind of helps move some of these higher up in the priority list.
Anyone else? Nothing? Um, nothing else? Motion, please.
We'll move to approve Resolution 12033-030519, approving Safe Routes to School Plan.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Duke Niack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 18, consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with Murphy Real Estate. Mike, you ready for that one?
Sure. So this is the property on 10th Street, a little bit south of Rossin. It just says that as you're heading southbound and, and you're, you're going right to, to get around that split in the roadway, that's that property, I believe it had been vacant for a little while. They are now doing some improvements, not the least of which is, is a sizable expansion of their paved area. That will require that they relocate and increase the size of their retention pond. And so whenever we have stormwater facilities, there is the stormwater maintenance management agreement. And so this is really the, the standard agreement that they sign and gives us assurance that they're going to take care of the facility.
Mike, questions regarding the expansion on 10th? Nothing? Okay. Seeing none, motion.
Kerkowski, make a motion to council adopt Resolution Number 12036-030519, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Murphy Real Estate LLC for their parking lot expansion project located at 7221 South 10th Street.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 18, consideration of a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement between the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District and the City of Oak Creek for a water course flood management project. Mike?
This is the First Amendment to the, the ICA on that agreement between MMSD and the city. The Water, Oak Creek Water Course Flood Management Project, which involved the acquisition of two formerly, former developed properties and that are flood prone and along floodway, basically acquired by MMSD through a cooperative effort between the city planning staff and stormwater staff, MMSD and the DNR, working all together to acquire these properties. And then MMSD was, went under contract to have the, the properties basically razed of their structures and other stacked debris. They will then be restored basically just to grass. I think there was one gravel area on the one property on Forest Hill that is allowed to remain. And that property is going to be part of Abbotshine Park. But the, the, the only real issue here is that the, the agreement is revised such that it was a not to exceed $1 million in the agreement. They want to modify that to not to exceed 1.5 million. And part of that is because the demolition contracts came in at just under 1.2 million. Now, as least as far as the city of, of Oak Creek is concerned, really shouldn't be concerned because that does not change Oak Creek's contribution to this agreement at all financially. That remains at $16,149. So again, MMSD is, is into it for $750,000. DNR grant for $416,000. And then a stewardship, stewardship grant from DNR for $16,000 as well. So Oak Creek has a small fraction of the overall cost of the project. And we, we've talked about this project before and it really was a, a good thing for the city. And this is kind of a non-issue financially as far as Oak Creek is concerned.
Thank you, Mike. Questions, comments? I'm just going to say one thing. This is just an unbelievable example of the staff really pulling a rabbit out of the hat with this one. These were some really challenged properties and they really made lemon, lemonade out of lemons, however you want to put it. Just a great job by the staff to work with the property owners, DNR, get this all done. And again, our exposure $16,000 to expand Abbotshine, solid, solid interest. Just incredible work. I don't know if the public can really appreciate it, and I'm not articulating it well, but just a great job by the staff. Nothing else? Motion, please.
Niack, move to approve Resolution Number 12038-030519, approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement between the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District and the City of Oak Creek for the Oak Creek Water Course Flood Management Project that was originally entered into under Resolution Number 11989-10018.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Item 20 is a resolution accepting dedication of public improvements and release from the development agreement for the FedEx Development at 500 Opus Drive. Mike?
As FedEx developed, they were required to make some improvements to public infrastructure. And that was sanitary sewer that they needed to relocate so that their building could be constructed where it is. And they reconstructed the public road, which was Opus Drive into the business park. It had been asphalt that was in a somewhat unfinished state and somewhat deteriorated state. They reconstructed that in new concrete. And they installed traffic signals at the intersection of Opus Drive and Oakwood Road. So that was the extent of the public improvements. And they did a good job. And all the, all the, the work is done satisfactorily. So our recommendation is that they be released from that development.
Questions, comments? I guess I got one question. Public improvements, did it include anything with the bike path? Did we ever figure out that bike path or didn't we? If you can refresh my memory, I don't, to the west.
Don't recall all that. Do you recall, Andrew, or Doug, all that? What, what the resolution was?
By recollection of the resolution of the bike path issues, that it was designed such that it could be, could be put in the future. They were not required to actually physically construct a bike path. But I believe, and I might be, I can check that out, but I believe the easement is in place. There was just a question of whether it'd be on the east side of the tracks or the west side of the tracks. And so as, as part of the, the whole discussion with, with FedEx and we wanted to clarify that because as you recall, there's a similar easement that runs along the west side of the tracks as part of the Ryan Business Park development. So it's really a matter of it's, the ability to put it in is there, although there is no, I mean, the actual physical instruction would be done at a later date with some additional funding source.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Nothing else? Motion.
We'll move to approve Resolution 12041-03051 on accepting dedication of the public improvements and release from the development agreement for the FedEx Development at 500 West Opus Drive.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 21 is the license committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski and also alert him that we do have a speaker request for item four and item 21. Okay? Thank you, Mayor. Then we have in front of you the common council report. If anybody has any questions, we will go to that speaker for item number four, if that's appropriate, Mayor.
Sure.
Okay. Right ahead. Arden?
For the health of the, Arden Dagnar, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. For the health of the citizens of Oak Creek, we established a health department. Now, the number of addictions are just enormous now that are coming down on us, including marijuana, hemp. But the basic one is alcohol. This picture shows, and if you would, instead of having the city actually sponsor this type of addiction, I'll show you how it can be done without this kind of, of, of a license. In, in those days when I was growing up, this was the type, fill my cone, we're going to get it at Drexel Town Square? But this should be considered.
Just to clarify, special event license really has nothing to do with a liquor license for the event. This is really for emergency plans, shutting down the square and parking, things of that nature for item four, which pertains to where farmers are.
It's not a liquor.
No. It is just a special events permit. Make sure that it's in place for it.
For really awesome farmers.
Yeah, very much, very much. Great commentary on that.
Mayor, you're, you're correct. The special event permits, they fill them out and they have, they have to have, you know, plans. I believe the police and fire are involved in this whole process, probably DPW. And Catherine does a real good job of making sure that these are, are all completed and there's any issues. It, it hasn't come, these haven't come up at our license committee meetings at all. So, yeah, there's, there's no request to, to have alcohol with these, these permits. It's not part of the process. Any other questions regarding any of the items on the council report, including item number four? Okay, seeing none. Kirkowski, make a motion to adopt the license committee recommendations as listed on the March 5, 2019 License Committee Report.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 22 is our vendor summary report for February 27. Any questions can be directed to the front row there, either engineering Doug or Bridget.
I might as well bring this up. Alderman Duke Niack, 3rd District, with the, with the weather challenges that we had in the, the month of January, February, I received a number of calls from constituents that didn't get their, their recycle picked up, their trash picked up. And many of them wanted to know or to make certain that, you know, we were reimbursed the cost of those missed services. So was there anything such as that that took place for reimbursement of missed service?
I have no knowledge of that, I think that we had, unless Andrew had.
I, I did not, I, I heard some of the similar sentiments that the Alderman had heard. I, I did not review the contract that we have with Advance, but I would, I would be very certain to say that, you know, issues such as that, not a reimbursable event, it's, it's really not a, a performance, it's really not a lack of performance, probably a force measure item. I can, I can definitely research that a little further just to put some, maybe put that baby to bed a little bit. But that would be very atypical that they, they would, they would not be covered by issues such as that, I would.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be fair, I, I heard some of the complaints also that way. Again, we had extreme weather conditions with coal. I don't think it's fair, we wouldn't put our employees, I wouldn't put my family at that risk. I wouldn't expect that employer to put his employees at that risk either because it's not life and limb. Sacrificing an injury or even worse.
Good point, Mayor, Dan. And some of the equipment doesn't function, especially hydraulic and diesel equipment when it's 50 below zero outside. So, but some of the residents just didn't quite grasp that or really understand.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Alderman Kirkowski, 3rd District. To elaborate just a little bit, I had a multitude of phone calls regarding the, the lack of recycling pickup and the requests for reimbursement or, or credit on their property taxes. And I, I pointed out to these residents that they, while they may not have gotten their single day of service due to the weather, when they came back around the next time, all these containers that were full and had bags next to them, the drivers were going to work extra hard because they had to get out of the trucks, go out and pick up the bags, put them in the containers and dump them a second time. So you could think of it as they're, well, they're, they're working double time in essence because they had all this stuff to extra pick up. And I pointed out too that recycling was not the only service that was not conducted for that day. We had no mail, we had no school, we had no city services of any kind, everything was closed. So we, we just couldn't stop with just the recycling pickup. So hopefully, we have no more of those days. It's true. Fire, fire and police are open, that's true.
There's no other discussion, questions? Motion? Oh, Mike, sorry.
I had the same amount of phone calls, Alderman Tillman, 4th District. And I tried to explain it, explain it away, but when they asked me about reimbursement or if the city gets a refund or I really didn't. or if the city gets a refund or I, I really didn't know how to answer that question. So if Andrew said he would look into it, I'd appreciate, you know, it's just a general statement from, uh, you know, said the alderman can answer that question over the phone. I basically told him, no, we don't, but I'm not sure if that was too accurate.
Fair enough. Okay. Um, there's no other comments, questions, motion?
We'll move to approve the February 27th, 2019 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $672,489.99.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukeniak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 23 is consideration of a motion to convene and close session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, section 19.85 sub 1 sub C to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator. Also President Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, we'll move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, section 19.85 sub 1 sub C to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
We'll now convene and close session and resume at its conclusion.
We'll move to reconvene in open session.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 25, at this time, there is no action to be taken, so I will call for adjournment.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Dukeniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Um, try to stay warm out there and again, enjoy Fat Tuesday. What's left? What's left?